Brad? Is this our new board, our new planning staff member? Do you want to introduce him? Right. Do you want to introduce him during petitions and communications then? Okay. Good afternoon. This is the May 2nd, 2024 zoning board of adjustment regular meeting. My name is Matt Perry and I'm chair of this board. I will now call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll so that we may verify the presence of quorum.
Just waiting for all these. Oh, okay. It was like a wave turning on. Also, I'll mention, um, we have new mics. You probably saw them at the last meeting, but they're very sensitive. So you want to be like within this amount so that the captioners can catch us. So if you're sideways or otherwise, it won't pick you up. So if you can help us with that, that would be great. With that, board member Callahan is absent. Eichols.
Here.
Grants Korsch.
Here.
Hutchins is absent. Ingram.
Aye.
Johansson.
Aye.
Chair Perry.
Here.
Smikarova is absent.
Wang.
Here.
We have six members present.
The records show we have quorum. And with that, we'll proceed to our agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's legislative information management system, available at limbs dot minneapolis MN dot gov. Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against indicate by saying nay. Any abstentions? That motion passes and the agenda is approved. I believe all of the board members have seen a copy of the minutes from the April 18th, 2024 zoning board of adjustment meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All against indicate by saying nay. Any abstentions? If you were not at the last meeting, you should abstain. And that motion passes. The minutes from the zoning board of adjustment, April 18th, 2024 meeting are approved. Mr. Ellis, are there any petitions or communications?
Chair Perry, members of the board. We do have a communication this evening. We have two new city staff with us today presenting for the first time. We have Miles Campbell and Nicholas Willett, who will be, uh, have their first applications today. They're both recently hired city planners. They've been a couple of months now and they're finally here with their first applications.
Great. Thanks. A reminder to applicants and others, if you're going to speak at the public hearing, please sign in on the sheet provided by the clerk and speak clearly into the microphone. If you've not signed in, you can do so on your way out. Also to applicants and others, please contact staff after the hearing with any questions regarding your projects. Lastly, if you have a phone or something that makes noise, could you turn it off or turn it on silent? I'd appreciate it. Let's review the agenda. I will read the agenda number and the address of the project and state whether it's slated for consent, continuous, withdrawal, return, or discussion. Consent items are those items that will be passed without the discussion by the board. We will be adhering to the staff recommended motion, uh, I'm sorry, recommendation found on your agenda under the items recommended motion section. Importantly, any applicable conditions will be listed in the same section. If you agree with this recommendation, including applicable conditions, you need to do nothing and the board will pass it as recommended. After the item is passed on consent, you're free to leave the chambers. Please check in with the staff member assigned to that item if you have any questions following the decision. If you disagree with the recommendation, please indicate you'd like to speak against the item when I ask and we'll put it on the discussion agenda. And discussion items are those items for which the board will take public testimony, deliberate on, and make a decision. After the public testimony has been heard for each particular discussion item, I will close the public hearing for that agenda item. Once I close the public hearing for an item, no additional public testimony will be taken, but staff may be asked to address board questions. After the public hearing for an item is closed, board members will then discuss and act on motions and the chair only votes in the case of a tie. So on our agenda for land use and other items, we have agenda item number five, which is 4715 Seventeenth Avenue South. This is a discussion item. Agenda item number six is 1212 Ninth Street South. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone here to speak against this item? I see no one. Agenda item number seven is 3452 Lindale Avenue South. This is also a discussion item. So let's review the items on our agenda for consent. They are items number six. Is there a motion to adopt this item on consent?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against indicate by saying nay. Any abstentions? That motion passes. So if you are here for agenda item number six, your land use request is approved. Good luck with your project.
May I just make a quick comment to MPHA?
Yes.
I, I just want to thank you very much for the well-done, um, fence that you're going to propose. I think it's really a good idea. I know that MPHA gets a lot of flack a lot of times, but it's a really nice addition and I think it'll enhance the property, not only in safety, but also in terms of its design. So thank you for going that extra mile.
I'm actually a consultant for them. I'm their executive director. I will pass on the compliments.
Thank you, board member Grants Korsch. So let's move on to agenda item number five, which is 4715 Seventeenth Avenue South. Mr. Lyska.
Good evening, Chair. Board members. Again, the item before you is 4715 Seventeenth Avenue South. The applicant is seeking yard variances to allow for a deck and a pergola, as well as a fence height variance. The subject property is an interior lot measuring 41 feet by 133 feet totaling 5,453 square feet. There's a slight rise in grade in the front, rising from the public sidewalk up to the crown of the lot where the house sits. That rising grade is about four feet. Again, the house sits on the crown in the rear. Grade tapers down around three feet to the public alley and the driveway. There are two trees on site, one 26-inch tree in the front yard and a 12-inch tree in the rear yard. The applicant has made three improvements to the property, all behind the house. A 16 by 16-foot deck is located .9 feet off of the interior, uh, south side yard setback or, or south, uh, lot line. There is a six-by-six pergola approximately one foot from that south lot line. And there's the eight-foot fence that runs along that south lot line, um, tapering to the rear. There are portions of that fence that are complying with the six-foot height standards. The fence does not, uh, follow the adjacent grade and decrease as grade decreases. So portions of that fence well exceed the six-foot height maximum. None of these improvements comply with the zoning code, uh, requirements and the applicant is seeking variances to allow for those three. A bit more background here, the city did receive a zoning complaint. An inspection was conducted. Many violations were noted. The applicant did resolve some of those issues, but these three issues do remain. The applicant did provide emails from neighbors as well. Those are included in your packet. Staff hasn't heard any other comments other than those. When analyzing a variance request, several findings must be met. The first, um, set of variances we're looking at here is for the deck and the pergola. Staff finds that there are no challenges in complying with the ordinance. The site has minor grade changes. That's not unusual for the city. There is a 12-inch tree in the rear yard, but there's ample space in the backyard to, to have a pergola, a deck, other improvements that would comply with the zoning code. So, uh, that finding is not met. Next, staff finds that the applicant is not proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner. The intent, spirit and intent of the zoning code here is to provide a separation of uses, to provide some buffering, especially when we have, uh, more active uses, places where people may gather, congregate, such as a deck or a pergola. The zoning code finds that buffering those improvements from that lot line reduces any impact, negative impact on adjacent properties. Again, more, this is coming from zoning enforcement, so we do know that these improvements have been a disruption for, uh, people in the area. The final finding, uh, staff finds that the proposed variances would alter the essential character of the area, especially noting the enjoyment of nearby properties. Again, coming from a zoning complaint, uh, these improvements have resulted in, uh, so, some negative impacts on adjacent properties. This property is in the shoreline as well. Staff is able to make all of the necessary shoreline findings for both the, the deck, the pergola, and the fence height request. Next, the, the fence, uh, variance will be analyzed. Again, staff finds that there are no challenges, uh, in complying with the ordinance based on this site. Again, minor grade changes associated with this, not uncommon for, for most of Minneapolis. Second finding, staff finds that the applicant is not proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner. Much of the zoning code is built around, uh, SEPTED principles, crime prevention through environmental design. One of those principles calls for natural surveillance, views into and out of places. So a taller fence than code would allow would run contrary to that principle. The final finding, staff is able to make the, the final finding that the proposed fence height increase would not be, uh, altering the essential character of the area or injurious to, uh, nearby properties. So with that, staff recommends denial of all three variance requests. I'll be here for questions. The applicant is also present.
Thank you, Mr. Lyska, for that presentation. And let the record show that board member Smikarova has joined us and, um, since it was only the staff reporter, small portion that she missed, and that's something that she will have already read, that she can vote on this matter. So are there any questions of staff? Yes.
Thank you, Chair Perry. Um, is there a, what is, can you refresh my memory on what the, is there a maximum deck size, square footage wise?
To be a permitted obstruction?
Yeah.
Nope, decks are not a permitted obstruction regardless of size. Uh, pergolas are a permitted obstruction. Those can be up to 20 feet or 20, 20 square feet in area. The proposed pergola is 36. So it, it's just too large to comply with those permitted obstructions, so then it must meet the standard required yards.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much. I have one more then. Um, was any permit submitted for the fence and what is the fence kind of process?
There have been no permits, uh, uh, submitted through the city. Typically, when you're building a six-foot fence, uh, no permit would be needed. So, uh, in this case, when the fence is over six feet, a building permit would be required. If staff was to receive a permit for a fence exceeding six feet, that's when we trigger, you know, uh, you're limited to six feet in required yards. So, uh, just so they would know that upfront, uh, they could, you know, come here seeking a variance to increase or adjust their fence points accordingly.
Great. Thank you very much.
And then, yes, board member Grants Korsch.
Thank you. I, I noted in the report that they had suggested a negotiation piece to lower the top two boards on the fence. My question is, from the driveway, it looked to me like it would still be over the six feet. Is that not correct?
It would still be over the six feet. That's correct. I would imagine that more than two boards will need to be removed off of the back portion along that driveway corner to comply with a six-foot.
Right. And you're talking about this corner here that was just given to us. This is, this was a good, we couldn't see this because we weren't on the other people's property, but.
Sure.
That tells the story of the.
Yep, from, from the alley there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? I don't see any. Thank you very much. Let's open the public hearing. The way this works is the applicant or the representative speaks first and anybody else who is in support of the application will speak and then people who are speaking in opposition will have an opportunity to speak. And if you could give your name and address for the record, that'd be appreciated and limit your comments to 10 minutes.
No problem. Hi, everybody. My name is Patrick Boyle. Uh, I am listed on the applicant, as the applicant, on the, uh, application summary. However, I'm actually the attorney for the applicant, which is the Chatters family. My address is in Edina. The address of the property is 4517, 4715, excuse me, Seventeenth Avenue South.
But what is your address?
My address is 42, is, nope, that's the old one. 5001 Clover Ridge, Edina, Minnesota, 55436.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. So I'm going to turn it over to Suzanne Chatters and then her daughter Amelie and then her mother, um, who are, again, the Chatters family is really the applicant's here. So I just wanted to quickly set up, uh, some kind of framework as to what we're going to talk about. Mr. Lyska's presentation generally is factually accurate, although we don't agree with the conclusions that he reached about, uh, whether or not the variance, the three variances are being requested actually meet the criteria set forth. With respect to the fence, uh, the Chatters family has agreed to adjust a little bit what they're willing to do and what they want to do. Ms. Chatters can speak to that, uh, more than I can. And so it's, it's, it's more in keeping with what Mr. Lyska is seeking. The deck, there is a practical difficulty as it relates to the deck. There's a hill. It's, it's not just a grade, there actually is a hill. Again, Ms. Chatters will talk more about that. Moving the deck will also cause damage to two trees on the property, which the Chatters family is trying to avoid. And then the pergola is, is a separate issue that Ms. Chatters will also address. There's swings that can be moved, et cetera. So she'll get into that. The, the two, so that's really more of a general, uh, in terms of the challenges and what they're willing to do. With respect to, you know, using it in a reasonable manner and then altering the essential character, I, I'm aware that there was a complaint, but you guys were also presented with a mountain of emails of support from the Chatters family members, uh, excuse me, the Chatters family, friends and, uh, people adjacent to the Chatters. Speaking on a personal level, if, if I was to reach out to neighbors and ask if I could do an alteration of this nature, I, I would maybe get one or two responses and I, I have a good relationship with my neighbors. I'm a pretty good guy. The mountain that came in from the Chatters neighbors, pretty much to a person other than the Soul Fest, everyone else who lives even reasonably close to them came out in support of this. I, I think just looking at that, it's pretty clear that the two, that elements two and three are met and that people in the community, people in their neighborhood are overwhelmingly in favor of them being allowed to do this. I, I understand the Soul Fest point of view, but when you have this many people come forward in favor of something, to say that one person or one group of people, one small group of people complained, it, that doesn't meet the, the last two criteria nearly as much as saying that clearly this is in keeping with, you know, reasonable use and, and using the property in a reasonable manner and, uh, not injury, injuring the locality. I mean, I, I've never seen so many neighbors come forward in favor of something. I, my neighbors don't agree on anything. So with that being said, it's kind of an o, general overlay. I'll turn things over to Suzanne Chatters and she can pick it up.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
I just should inform you that once you're done speaking, you're done speaking.
I am done speaking, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
All right.
All right.
So would anyone else like to speak in favor of the application?
I've never done this before, but I'm assuming you guys have the whole application in front of you with the photos.
Yep.
Okay.
We have everything and we have read it. And if you could give your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Suzanne Chatters.
All right.
We live at this address in question and.
And if you could speak one at a time, that would be great.
Yeah. I guess to address the, the variances that we're asking for, um, I'd like to start with the history of this and that it was built in 2020, which is almost four years ago. And, um, there was no complaint until 2024, when a trampoline was involved. So, um, you know, uh, the neighbors were upset about a trampoline and some children's equipment, which was moved. Those were some of the original citations. And then continued to call and complain about deck and pergola and so forth, um, in what feels like a pretty harassing manner. We understand that in order to comply with code, we'd have to chop off four feet of the inside of our deck. And, um, one of Lyska's creative solutions to that, when he came over to talk about that, would be moving the, the gate from the garage side over to the corner, um, which is six feet, four inches, the gate itself. And so when we talk about taking down the top two panels of that fence on the deck, it's in matching the gate, which Weckman, the city inspector who came out and looked at it, said would be okay. So in, in trying to negotiate meeting code for this, that was something that we, that would be an easy fix, taking off the top two panels. But we're asking to not chop up that inner side of our deck and putting the gate over to the corner because, um, A, the, the mature tree in the middle of our yard, um, almost didn't survive the first dig. And so to move the deck to that north side of the deck, um, could potentially damage that tree again, a maple. And, um, we've actually planted six additional aspen columna trees in addition to the two that Lyska has on our survey there. And, um, they're establishing roots and that one would also be damaged. And in opening up that corner, we are also, as you can see in the photos, are provided by the Soul Fest, that there are a lot of burglars and prowlers right off of Cedar Avenue and the parkway where we live, who, um, we'd be opening a dark corner for them to walk into our gate and hide in. So we feel like, um, the deck is not harming our neighbor's property. It's not damaging anything. It's been fine until, like I said, there's a neighbor dispute about a trampoline, which has been addressed and now we feel that we're being attacked and harassed by having to make changes that really they weren't complaining about for almost four years. I mean, they continue to call the city inspector and ask for them to come out and cite us for an umbrella that's on the deck because that also needs to be five feet from the property line. And, um, anyway, back to the point of the deck, we just really would like to not have to chop that up because it would hurt two trees and open up safety issues for us to do so. And, um, the pergolas that are left in the photos there that you have are adult swings that we have coffee on. They're not like the children's pergolas that we removed with the citation that we initially received. So, um, they were never part of the original complaint and I, unfortunately, I wish that, I wish that this was just a case of issue with the city coming and citing us for problems they found, but it's not. It's about a neighbor complaint and we've done what we can to address what is understandably, um, frustrating for them. And to have to continue to appease them without, you know, any justification of damage or harm done to their property in any way is unreasonable in, in our view and does create a safety issue for us and, um, damage some trees. So those are the arguments that we have in requesting for the deck to remain as-is and we are happy to take the, the fence on it down. It, it is that height because it's on a hill and it was built because of the hill that way. And, um, yeah, we would like to leave our pergola. You can walk down any block in Minneapolis and find homes in violation of code. But what matters is whether or not your neighbors take issue with it and unfortunately ours have. And we have done our best to address the ones that we think were reasonable and we feel that the continued citations are not reasonable. And, and I don't understand how anything that we have in our yard here is not in keeping with the spirit of the neighborhood. It's, it's a.
It's the spirit or intent of the ordinance. It's not the, the.
Of the ordinance. I don't understand how we're.
Okay.
Opposing or not working with that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. Do you have any questions that I could clarify in our application?
Any questions of the applicant? I don't see any.
Thanks.
Mr. Chatters, would you like to speak?
I got mine at this time.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of the application?
My daughter, Amelie Chatters, wanted to read something.
Oh, sure.
Hi, my name is Amelie Chatters. Do I also give my address?
Yes, please.
4715 Seventeenth Avenue South.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just wanted to thank everyone for your time this afternoon and allowing me to make this personal statement. Once again, my name is Amelie Chatters. I am a sophomore at St. Olaf College in Northfield and behind me are my little siblings, Bjork and George Chatters. And I'm here with my grandparents, Alan and Alita Isaacson, and my father, George Chatters, and my mom, Suzanne Chatters. We are the fourth generation in our family to live in our family home at 4715 Seventeenth Avenue South, Minneapolis. And in 2020, four years ago, my parents built, um, the fence and deck in question. They built it for peace, privacy, safety, and enjoyment. It was built in the spring of the COVID pandemic during worldwide quarantine in a time where children were not allowed to go to public parks and were not allowed to go to school and the world was navigating a life in isolation. The fence provided a recreational play area and other form of protection on the side of our house for the children. My parents intended to build a six-foot fence on the front slash side of our home to enclose the play area for the children, while our neighbors, the Soul Fest, made it clear they did not want the front slash side fence to be above four feet. To appease them, my parents left the front slash side of the fence at four feet in height until about three years later. Last summer, our family bought a trampoline for the play area and determined it would look better to hide the trampoline by adding two feet of fence to the four-foot front inside, thereby increasing its height to the original six feet. The Soul Fest called the city and asked an inspector to determine if the front slash side fence was permitted to be six feet in height per Minneapolis code ordinance. The city inspector informed the Soul Fest that the front and side of the fence was in fact code and allowed to be six feet in height, but the trampoline and pergola recreational equipment had to be removed. In response, my parents moved the trampoline and cut down the two pergolas with children's recreational equipment and swings per the city inspector's citations, but this was not good enough. Mr. Soul Fest banged on our door, pointed in my dad's face and shouted at him as he told him that, "We let us have your deck, but now we're going to lose it all." The Soul Fest continued to call the assigned city inspector and managed to get him to come to the property no less than six times in four months to find further code violations within our property. Our deck and backyard were not harming anyone. They are not injuring anyone else's property. So we would please appreciate if anyone would like to vote to leave our deck, fence, and two remaining pergolas. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? If you could give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Alita Isaacson. My address is 7203 Newcombe Avenue Northwest, but I am the, um, second generation of being in the house in question. So, um, I would like to read aloud some of the overwhelming, um, points that, uh, points of yay for the, um, deck to, the whole, whole thing being, uh, that, um, and I have just a few cases here to read. For ease of reading aloud. Thank you. To support the variance. These are from, um, community members. The names and addresses you, I think you have in yours. I do not have them in this one for the public.
Right. We have.
Your yard and fence are beautiful and I'm happy to support you. A shorter fence would not make sense from the deck side. Yes. Capital. Improve, approve variance, uh, variance request. I'm so glad you are soliciting support. The next one. We love your gorgeous fence. Our response is yes. Approved variance request. Hope you and George and the kids find a way to stay cool this week. These were in the summertime. Support variance. Yes. Variance request, support, approved variance request. Your fence is gorgeous. Your fence is gorgeous. Another one. Actually, it's really sad that some neighbor wrote up the complaint in the first place. How annoying. All the best and sorry, all the best and sorry you are stuck with this sort of a hassle. On the bright side, I bet you are seeing some stellar neighbor of support right now. OMG. What nosy-nelly would not bother with that? I'm sorry to hear someone even took the time to report that. Ridiculous with everything that I had, we have going on in this world. We absolutely support a variance. Yes. Approved variance request. Ridiculous. Exclamation point, exclamation point. Yes. Approved variance request. It's too bad your neighbors don't have anything better to do than complain because their whole world revolves around their, their own house and property. Good grief. Best regards. Yes to the variance. Best of luck with everything. Take care and great job reaching out to the neighborhood group. Support variance. We're sorry to hear that you're having to deal with this. Yes. Approved variance. And again, support the variance. We support you. I'm so sorry. And then support the variance. Yes. Variance, exclamation point. Sorry you're having to jump all these hoops. Support variance. I'm sorry Rob and Julie are pulling you through this. I've known them to be really good people for the entire 22 years we've lived here. Unfortunately, it feels like one or both of them got their heads wrapped around the idea that, that about 20 square feet of a nice looking fence are worth fighting over and won't go and won't let go. In any case, I hope the yes feedback is near unanimous. The variance is approved and neighborly peace and harmony ultimately reigns supreme. Cheers, good neighbor. I would like to also add that I'm the second generation in the family to live at that address and, um, am joint owner with Suzie. And, uh, we have, they've always done things to the best that they could do with what they had. And in, in the case of, um, the fence that they want probably down completely, um, there, it's been used right by their dog as a edge of the property for many, many years. So, um, I hope that you will take all of these, um, facts about, um, the, the impression on Amalie and our family and, um, on the support of the, uh, neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? I see no one. Would anyone like to speak against the application? Yes, sir. Could you give your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Robert Soul Fest. Forty, I live at 4717 17th Avenue South. Uh, we're the property just to the south of the, uh, 4715 that the application for variances. I'm here with my wife. And I, yeah, there's a few things I'd like to say first. It's sad that it's come to this, that people would mischaracterize our intent and, and our good nature. Uh, I'm going to read a few things here before addressing some of the points that I've heard. My wife and I have lived at the address for 33 years. We've known all four generations of this family that was said. Last week, we did submit a detailed statement that I believe you have before you, asking why we request denial of this application. All three code violations occurred along the border of the two properties. Our property, um, which affects us more than it does people that are in the neighborhood emails, live a block away. The applicant was well aware of the building codes during the planning process and reminded of them during construction. When I saw them, uh, clearly going against what I saw to be the building codes as they set. They chose not to request the variance at that time. They made that choice as well as openly sharing that they were going to build what they wanted, regardless of the codes and our concerns. Unfortunately, now it becomes apparently on us that we're the bad people because they built in non-compliance. And I, I don't like that characterization. Today, we are here in agreement with staff's recommendations and simply asking that all building codes be followed for 4715 without exception. The, this has been our, this has been what we've said all along when, when they were first planning it, when they constructed it. And yes, there was no formal complaint raised. We tried to work with our neighbors for three years and they kept adding more and more items and selling more things on that property line. That it came to the point that I, I told them, if, if you continue, we're going to have to, we're going to have to call it in. And that's, that's how it happened. I don't remember banging on a door. I remember knocking on a door and talking to George and, and, and him saying that they'll stop it. And then an hour later they continued. And so that's, that's where the, I did call in for the complaint and I openly admitted that to them. These codes exist for a reason. Their stated purpose includes to be the minimum requirements for the promotion of public health, safety, aesthetics, economic viability, and welfare. Enforcement of these rules would be great, would greatly restore our quality of life as well as protect integrity and the value of our property at 4717 17th Avenue South for ourselves and future owners. A couple of points I'd like to address. The emails that were sent off to the neighborhood, I read through them last night. And I want to point out, it was very limited in what was shared with the neighbors, um, talking only about fence height, not talking about the, the pergola that's, it's referenced, it's swings that are on the property line. The initial complaint that I called in was for checking for stuff up to code. I specifically called out a fence height. Amalie had correctly stated that I thought that the fence height in the front was limited four feet because it was within five feet of my buffet. But the inspector informed me later that it was from the foundation, not from the bump out. And so I, 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 I've always said, when I called the inspector, I said, let's get them out here and let's find a final ruling on this instead of having disagreements on what the rule is. And if it's within their right, it's within their right. But, um, so that case, yes, they could raise it six feet. They have. The fence, uh, speaking to the point of lowering it down and maybe to the height of the gate. The gate does, is not at the peak height of the fence. The peak height of the fence is eight feet. The gate is, uh, has a slight upgrade to that gate. So that would, that, that's another consideration as far as the peak height of the fence. In my submission, there's a photo of the four garages that back together and the fence blocks visibility. And as was said, we've had, we've had people come test their garage doors and, and cars and such. It just, it just adds more isolation, which is one of the concerns that the codes are there for. The pergola swing, are swings. They bend swings. They sit on swings. They are where people gather. And, you know, just a side note, and I, this is kind of nitpicky maybe, but of the emails that were listed in that packet, many of them were duplicated page after page after page. I saw two or three times the same comments, the same email, two or three times. So it's not represented the longevity of those pages, um, in terms of the neighborhood.
Could you kind of, you've been speaking for a while and could you sum up your comments, please?
So I'm, I'm sorry about the rambling there. Basically, we're in support of the findings and upholding the codes in the city. We don't see a reason for exception. And I guess I want to, uh, open it up to, uh, the board if there's any questions for us.
Any questions?
As the affected neighbor.
Thanks for your testimony.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Does anyone else like to speak against the application? I see no one. Let's close the public hearing. Board comment, uh, before a board comment, uh, one thing for the public, we are not a mediation board between neighbors. So that, obviously there's some friction and there are other services in the city that you can, uh, make, take advantage of for mediation purposes. This board is about the variances in question and we have legal findings that we have to find for fact. Ms. Wang.
Chair Perry, I was going to ask if Mr. Boyle can come up and speak again. I have a follow-up question or clarifying question.
Except the public hearing is closed.
That's right.
So I can't.
So let me, let me finish my thought then. As you've noted, Chair Perry, I'm hearing more civil issues and disagreements and I am empathetic to that, but it's obviously beyond our ability to help with that. One of the things, three things that I actually had wanted to add, Mr. Boyle, given the opportunity, was, um, how the three findings were met. That was something that I had not heard was the three legal findings around challenges in complying, spirit and intent of the ordinances, and essential characteristics. So that is the full extent of my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Boyle, the public hearing is closed.
Cool.
Any other board comment? I would entertain a motion. And by the way, uh, I should also mention, the applicant has talked about making some modifications. We can't really, we're not a design board either. So we can't take that into account. It's what the applicant has applied for that we have to address, um, for the, uh, for the variance requests. So there, is there a motion?
Can we comment after the motion?
Sure. We can have a discussion on the motion.
Okay, great.
Motion, anyone?
I'll make a motion to support staff findings.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, discussion?
Yeah. I just, I just want to point out that, um, that this is a complicated issue and it's obviously become more than what we can handle. But I am concerned about going back to the letter of the law, the letter of the zoning code, but more importantly also, um, to the fact that I wanted to say that it is reasonable to build a fence that you can do transparencies through. I'm very concerned that somehow or another you feel by building this wall of eight feet, you're going to keep burglars out. And I think that that's a falsehood. And also the fact that it is at this, this corner is really critical and I found it very, very unsafe. And I would, if I lived in the neighborhood and walked, I would be very uncomfortable walking by this wall of eight feet. And, um, in other situations, we have denied these kinds of eight-foot fences in a, in an alley situation. So this is not unusual for us to do. And I, I am very troubled by it and I do hope that you can figure out a way because it is, it is reasonable, um, to build a fence that would still fit the code issues. So, um, and I also just want to comment that it's great that you're well-liked from neighbors, but it's also, it is important that we still follow the codes and the, and the rules. And so I am troubled that, um, just because a lot of people chimed in with, with laudatory comments, that doesn't really sway us. And I think that's an important piece to note, too. So.
Thanks for those comments. Uh, any other comments? Yes, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, Chair Perry. I certainly empathize with everybody. Yeah, I just want to make the comment that we're, we're pretty limited in scope here. And so I just can't get to the practical difficulties. And so that's all I have.
Thanks for those comments. Anyone else? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Thank you. Board member, I Colts.
Aye.
Ingram.
Aye.
Johansson.
Aye.
Smikarova.
Aye.
Wang.
Aye.
That's five yays and zero nays.
Uh, the.
Oh, I'm so sorry. In grand's course. So that's six yays and zero nays.
So the requests are denied. You can talk to staff about what your options are going forward. Let's move on to our second item for discussion tonight. This is 3452 Lindale Avenue South. Importantly, as Mr. Campbell will tell us, this is not a variance request. This is a non, rebuttal of non, loss of non-conforming rights.
Correct. Uh, Chair Perry, board members, a pleasure to make your formal acquaintance. I believe that should be showing up on your end. So we are discussing here tonight, uh, 3452 Lindale Avenue South, Plan Item, uh, 17716. Again, the request here from the applicant is rebutting the presumption of abandonment made by the zoning administrator for an auto repair major use at the property in question. A little bit of background on this site, the current zoning for this property is CM2 Corridor Mixed Use. It falls under our, uh, Corridor Four Built Form Overlay District. Property is, uh, just under 5,000 square feet and is located in the Ward 10, um, the south uptown neighborhood and located on that Lindale Avenue South. In terms of the item before you tonight, as mentioned by the chair, we are discussing a certificate of non-conforming use. Just as a refresher for the board, um, this is an option available to, um, business in the city where a use is not conforming with the current zoning code, but, um, maybe has been legally established under a previous zoning or, um, in another circumstance. In this case, uh, again, that certificate of non-conforming use, you all as the Board of Adjustment are empowered by the Code of Ordinances to, uh, make findings in support or against that certificate. Essentially what this would allow is for, um, this non-conforming use to be established or reestablished, in this case legally, even though it does not fit with that current Corridor Mixed Use zoning. We'll go a little bit more into kind of the history of the site and those. In terms of what could cause non-conforming rights to lapse, or in this case, um, a conditional use permit to lapse, a lot of our language in the code, um, talks about the loss of non-conforming rights in case of discontinuance, which in code is defined as a period of more than one year continuous, um, in which a use has been abandoned or discontinued, at which point the use is considered abandoned and may not thereafter be reestablished or resumed. Any subsequent use of that land needs to conform with the current code in effect. So in terms of this site's zoning history, first to start, um, staff took a look back in the 1924 zoning ordinance, on the zoning ordinances, use districts maps, this was a property zoned as commercial. Um, in 1963, during a major code update, the property was rezoned to the Community Commercial District, B3C dash one. That district did allow for, uh, garages for storage, repair, and servicing of motor vehicles. That was a permitted use by rights. And then also called out that automobile body repair would also be permitted with a conditional use permit. In 1999, the property was rezoned to the C4 General Commercial Zoning District. Again, in this case, that major auto repair use remained a conditionally permitted use. Um, and it's only until, uh, just last year in July of 2023, where the property was rezoned to that Corridor Mixed Use District. In that district, uh, major auto repair is not allowed or not permitted, although minor auto repair, um, is a conditional use. In terms of the use of the property and history, um, part of this has been provided by the applicant and their own record-keeping, along with previous property owners, as well as, um, going through cities' archives in terms of building permits. In terms of the kind of very old history, um, prior to 1963, the original structure was built, um, in 1924, or excuse me, 1925, I believe. That was a smaller structure, was later expanded in the 1960s by a former property owner, Donald Lindgren. There were a number of different. There were a number of different building permits pulled over the years by that individual or their business, which was Quality Paint and Auto LLC. Based on staff's analysis of city archives and records, it appears that Quality Paint and Auto owned the property and occupied that as a major auto repair use up until 2018. In 2018, there was a bit of activity where the business space was leased to a different business, Quality Auto Body, in a written lease agreement, before later that year being sold to a different individual, Francois Voe, who then provided a notice of eviction to those two individuals operating as Quality Auto Body. In between that time, there was another eviction in 2019 for another former member of that Quality Paint and Auto Body business. Before the use was reestablished in 2020, where there was a commercial lease agreement between Francois Voe and ABI Auto Care LLC. That business was in place for a number of years. We do have a couple of different records here. So the active business license for that auto repair use expired in, I believe it was September of 2021. Although, based on some of the materials submitted by the applicant, it does appear that the use was continuing to operate after that date. The latest that we have in terms of records is that we have a writ of recovery issued by the Hennepin County Housing Court in favor of Francois Voe, then the property owner, ordering the eviction of ABI Auto Care from the premises. So again, putting that at, I believe, May 2022 was the date for that writ of recovery. In July 2023, again, is where that change in the zoning occurs. But prior to that, in May 2023, is where staff sees essentially the existing non, or the existing conditionally allowed use of major auto repair lapsing after a year of discontinuance. In terms of staff's findings in regards to the certificate of nonconforming use, under both the 1963 and 1999 zoning ordinances, staff does find that major auto repair use was a conditionally permitted business at this site. It was allowed in terms of no prohibitions or other restrictions on that use. And that use was consistent and did not lapse through at least 2018, based on record-keeping on the city's end, as well as some of the materials submitted by the applicant. With the removal of those tenants in 2018 and 2019, within a period of one year, the use was continued under that new business in 2020, which then operated for a period of two years. Again, we have the active license expiring in 2021, but then that final eviction coming in May of 2022. No available evidence that has been provided by the applicant clearly and convincingly demonstrates continued use of that property as an auto repair shop after May of 2022. In terms of, by May 2023, we would see that that conditional use permit would have lapsed after a year of non-use, and any kind of rights to that use would have expired. Again, in July of 2023 is where that rezoning occurred. And that, again, made this major auto repair use a prohibited use in the zoning district and would not allow it to be reestablished, barring the certificate of nonconforming use being approved. The other item I will mention here, and in code, we do talk about the rights in terms of rebuttal of abandonment. Where a loss of nonconforming rights is apparent due to vacancy, a property owner may rebut the presumption of abandonment only by presenting clear and convincing evidence that discontinuance of the nonconforming use or structure for the specified period was due to circumstances beyond the property owner's control. Again, staff does not feel that there has been a demonstration that that use was continued past '22, and we do not feel that the applicant has convincingly demonstrated that that discontinuance was outside of the control of the former property owner. With that being said, and given those findings, staff is recommending that the Board of Adjustment denies the certificate of nonconforming use for this major auto repair use. And I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thanks for that presentation. Are there any questions of staff? I see none. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, Chair Perry. My question is about major versus minor. So with the minor potentially being permitted, how do we, as a board, deal with that?
Sure, so again, the difference here, major auto repair completely prohibited in that CM2 district. Minor auto repair is allowed via a conditional use permit. That would be a separate process to apply for and receive. That would go through the city's planning commission for review. In terms of how those two differ, essentially, major auto repair in the dis, and this was included in the staff report, if you do need kind of a reference, includes all of those activities that fall under minor auto repair, with some inclusions, where it also includes all activities or repair servicing of automobiles allowed in a minor automobile repair establishment, and the rebuilding or reconditioning of passenger automobiles, body, frame, or fender straightening, replacement or repair, painting or rust-proofing, or other similar repair or servicing of automobiles. I will note here that that major auto repair use does exclude commercial wrecking, dismantling, scrap or salvage yards, tire recapping, and truck or tractor repair. In terms of minor, again, that definition is provided in the staff report, but that's more along the lines of tire rotations, brake lights, minor repair services.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you very much. Let's open the public hearing. Is the applicant present? If you could give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Chair Perry and board members. My name is Keon Doustey. I'm an attorney, representing my father, Manager Doustey, who's the property owner. I came afar away, 740 Portland Avenue, Minneapolis. Let me begin by setting the stage, and congratulations to Mr. Campbell for appearing in front of you for the first time. Hope you have a wonderful career here. CPED's a great place, worked with it many times. He did a good job of outlining what our burden is. We do have the burden by presenting clear and convincing evidence. But let me talk about what clear and convincing evidence actually is. It's more than probable cause, but less than beyond a reasonable doubt. In other words, it just means highly probable, according to our Minnesota Supreme Court. We can show that we overcome this burden in three ways. The first is through leases and filings with the Secretary of State, establishing an auto repair shop has been operating there. Second, establishing through legal filings and order that the property has been evicted. And then three, showing that despite the eviction order, the auto repair shop continued operating based on receipts, invoices, and online reviews. So it's undisputed that it has been an auto repair shop for decades. We're just disputing when it actually ended. Quality Auto was ordered to be evicted in 2019, but the Secretary of State filings online show that Quality Auto continued with their business license in 2022. In 2023, listing both the primary address and the executive office at 3452 Lindale Avenue South. Hennepin County property records also list the property from 2020 to 2022 as the primary property owner. Invoices and receipts from 2023, a part of your packet, show this as well. And then online reviews, as late as July 2023, showing work at this property, which is the disputed moment when it lapsed, indicate that this was operating as an auto body shop. The reviews for that place went all the way back to 2013, indicating that it was Quality Auto continuing to stay there past the eviction order. I think it's important to note, just because an eviction order has been ordered, those are just words on a paper until someone enforces it. It doesn't appear the property owner actually ever enforced that eviction. Abdi Auto was ordered to be evicted in 2022. You have essentially bad actors who are flaunting legal orders here that's going beyond the property owner's control. I looked up Abdi Auto as well on their online Yelp page. Their phone number actually went back to Quality Auto. I think from Mr. Campbell's presentation, you've seen that Quality Auto sold to someone called Quality Paint and Auto Inc. So it appears that these owners are working with each other, selling and reincorporating in the same name. Next, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about common sense and how we can use it. I love to cook, I love to make cookies. If you have flour alone, that's not enough. If you have eggs alone, that's not enough. If you have chocolate chips, that's not enough. But when you mix it all together, you're on your way to making a chocolate chip cookie, and that's what we have here. When, what we're asking you to do is something similar. We're asking you to put together the records on the Secretary of State's website, the Yelp reviews, the invoices that are showing that this property is still, or these previous owners are still allowing auto body use, and the invoices, the affidavits, and online reviews that this was happening. You have everything you need, not in isolation, but together, to know that there was an auto body shop there based on the circumstances. And circumstantial evidence can be used to establish a clear and convincing standard, as we have here. And finally, I'd like to talk about public policy in the city of Minneapolis, what it's charged with in developing both a racial equity lens and empowering small business owners of color. My dad came to this country after speaking out against the Iranian government when he was 20 years old. He was tortured for 18 months. He came here, to the city of Minneapolis, and they gave him everything he needed. He worked with Senator Paul Wellstone at the Center for Victims of Torture, and he helped 400,000 people across the country get the relief they needed after they passed a bill. And my dad became a successful business owner. He has multiple properties, very similar to this, across the city. One is at 37th and Chicago, which was the epicenter, as we know, of, very close to the epicenter of the unrest we've experienced in our city. He took that auto body shop and he painted Taisha Edward's face on it, who is another tragic case that we've seen of young people being murdered in our city. He's done everything to give back to this city. He's worked hard, he's employed other people of color, other immigrants, and he's done everything in his power to make sure that we live through the values of our city and what our Minneapolis 2040 plan is moving forward. In conclusion, we've overcome our burden because we've shown an auto repair shop has been operating there, that a repair shop use has been continuous despite eviction orders, and the circumstances were beyond the previous property owner's control. We've done this through lease agreements, filings with the Secretary of State, legal filings and orders, invoices, receipts, affidavits, and online reviews. What we're simply asking this board to do is what's been done for decades, allow an auto body repair shop to operate there, but this time by a man who embodies the resilience, grit, and love for our city that we all share. Thank you very much, and I'm open to take any questions at this time.
Thanks for your presentation. Are there any questions, Mr. Doustey?
Yeah.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that this information that you showed on the very last page about the filing dates with the Secretary of State, that was given to the city planner?
That's correct.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, Chair Perry. My question is similar to what I kind of asked before with the major versus minor. I looked at all the receipts and things like that. It all kind of lines up under minor, except for potentially the advertisement that, obviously, you can advertise something, but that's not necessarily the use. So my question is, what is the evidence of the major use?
I don't have direct evidence of the major use. I know the advertisement is there, and that's where I'm leaning on the circumstantial evidence. These were the receipts that we were able to recover. But I think that it is highly probable, given that that is what they're advertising, they're doing this other work, that they have done this, especially in the past as well. But I understand your point in question, Board Member Ingram.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I see none.
Thank you very much, Chair Perry.
Thanks for your presentation. Is there, you'd like to speak, sir?
If you'll let me.
Oh, absolutely.
My name is Manager Doustey. And.
Your address?
13404 Knox Drive, Berthold 55337.
Thank you.
I've worked in city Minneapolis last 30-some years. I owned three, four businesses. 3450 Lindale Avenue, the restaurant next to it, I own it, and we got a license. I owned 500 East Lake Street, and I have 3718 Chicago Avenue, that's a body shop. And I used to have 3700, the mobile gas station and auto service. It used to be down there, and city bought it from me. The reason that I ask, before I bought that property, I talked to zoning, I talked to, my agent went down there, talked to them. I talked to city planning, and talked to city council. Everybody approved it. Now, I spent all my fortune, all my retirement in that property. Everything we, we upgraded, everything. Make it so clean, so nice. And the city zoning come with the idea. I'm just wondering, where did that come from? How you want to turn a small business down? I know the ordinance, I done everything behind it. Why they do it in this time? Last three, four months, myself, my son, we keep writing, we keep asking. City Council, Vice President, everybody approved us, the neighborhood. They come and see. Why the city zoning come in front of me and want to fight? And they say, no, this is not enough. Bring that document, I bring it. Not enough. Bring that document, not enough. Bring the receipt, all the, everything, it's not enough. I don't know where should I come from? I don't know where I have to find? If somebody asks you how many finds, where you have to find? I'm just tired of the paperwork and those things. I want to work. The people down there, hard-working people. We are waiting, I pay them, because I keep them. And I don't know how long more we have to go through those things with zoning. The city say, yes, you are right. And the zoning say, no, something different. Bring paper. Where should I bring paper? The neighborhood, look at the sign down there. Look at what you see. Every sign, everything. What else I have to do? I'm just begging you guys to help me. I need your help. I need the city work, not the chief, not the homeless, not something else. If you want something, you have to help us to make it together. Thank you so much. I don't know if I can say something more.
Thanks for your testimony.
Sure. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? It's not really an application, the nonconforming use certificate. I see no one. Anyone like to speak against? You can come up and give your name and address for the record. And I just should point out, this is a certificate of rebuttal of loss of a certificate of nonconforming use. It's not a variance. So it's not like the one we just heard before where there were a variance, just to keep that in mind.
So would you not like to hear from a neighbor?
Sure, absolutely. If you could give your name and address for the record.
I just want to make sure I'm appropriate to speak. My name is Mary Horrigan. I live at 3512 Aldrich Avenue South.
Yep.
I just, I'm going to put this out first, and it seems as though these are very reliable business people, different than what we experienced. So number one, kind of from what I've heard, it was horrific for several years with people, cars being parked all over the place because there's inadequate parking. So on Aldrich, on the north end of Aldrich, near this shop, there are several duplexes, triplexes, et cetera. And those renters were, you know, pushed out because there's repair cars. And then these horrible people were repairing their cars on the street in front of my house. It was, you know, the shop was running at 4:00 AM, I'd call the cops. You know, things weren't going well. So while these men are likely to be better, it's really hard on a neighborhood to have to police it. So I just want to say that. And we already have four automotive businesses one block away, one block away. And part of me thinks about the livability of the neighborhood, and like, what direction are we going? We already have four businesses at 36th. We're going to put, we're going to reinstate this business at 35th that was already not zoned. I'm sad for this man. I don't know what happened with communication with the city. But I need to say, for the neighborhood, it's hard. The no parking and just the whole feel that you're going to give the neighborhood. And really, it is hard to have an automotive business there, particularly if they're not well-behaved.
And I think that, to your comment, I think that's where the zoning changed, as it did.
Okay. And it's needed. And I'm sorry for these men, I truly am, and I'm uncomfortable to speak against their desires. But it was a rough run in the 1920s. run in the 1920s. But I can also say, it's been awfully quiet for quite a while, not, you know, I'm, as a neighbor, I'm disputing without facts, except my observation that that place has been quiet for more than a year. Yes, there's an occasional coming and going, but I, I got to say, we didn't think there was a business there anymore, other than, oh, it must be somebody's friend using it. A friend of mine said, oh, maybe I can store my RV there. So I don't know what went on, but it was awfully quiet, and I'm sorry if Yelp reviews are the evidence, but anybody can write a Yelp review.
Thanks for coming down--
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Anyone else like to speak against?
My apologies that I can't stay. I have an event, and I don't mean to be rude. I care about this issue, but I've got to leave. Thank you.
Sure. I see no one. Let's close the public hearing. Board comment? Yes, Board Member Johannessen.
Thank you, Chair Perry. This is definitely a challenging choice, but I'm tending to lean towards the city's I find it hard to decipher the evidence proposed, that I would know for sure that it was what it was. I feel like it's something we've kind of run into in the past recently, again, people presenting evidence that disagrees with the city has obviously reviewed. So I just want, I support staff findings.
All right. Thanks for those comments. Others? Anyone else would like to give a comment? Would anyone like to make a motion? Sure.
I'll make a motion to adopt staff findings.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Ingram, do you have any? You seem like you want to say something.
I'm just, I'm split by it. I think what Member Johannessen said is correct. It's tough for us to assess the validity of evidence, and if it reaches the standard of proof that is needed. And so that's, that's where it is, where my mind is at.
Sure. And that is one of the questions. You know, I think I might have Mr. Campbell come up again and just speak to something about clear and convincing evidence, if you could. I think that will help out. We've heard that, I mean, one of the things I would point out, just from my observation, is just as Mr. Doosie said, that simply filing something, having an advertisement can or cannot mean that it actually is happening. I think that is not really bearing of clear and convincing evidence, but I'd like to hear from Mr. Campbell.
Absolutely. Chair Perry, members of the board, I think it is somewhat open-ended by design, and that language of--
You all are sort of the arbiters here.
--of if you are convinced. And the language in code says that the burden of proof here is on the applicant to make that convincing argument, either that this was not discontinued, or that it was outside of the control of the property owner to have that lapse of more than a year. From staff's perspective, we did not, again, see that, you know, the zoning administrator did review the materials. Clearly, based on a lot of that evidence that was provided in terms of parts and invoices, that there was activity at least being done by someone claiming to be Quality Auto Body LLC and still using that business account at the Auto Zone down the streets. But in staff's eyes, that did not amount to putting someone in the building physically. Similarly, some of the utility billings that we saw were for past due building from Excel Energy and the telephone company, and not putting anyone directly in the building at that time, but someone that had been there previously. And again, that's staff's perspective. You all are the body that is empowered under code to evaluate all of the evidence in place and determine if that hurdle of clear and convincing evidence has been met.
Okay. Thanks. So I would just say, my two cents on this is that when the city wants to see small business owners succeed, they absolutely do. I'm the president of a business association, so I definitely want to see businesses succeed. But the clear and convincing evidence, the statute that we're working with, really, I don't know that that has been met in this case, and that's unfortunate. I have great regard for the business owner. He's done a lot of good for the city of Minneapolis, and so this isn't a question of a statement against him. But, and I should also point out that the, we hear this often, and that the city's communication is not the greatest in the world. You hear mixed signals. And so I think that is something that is unfortunate. I would like to see that change, but that is not part of the clear and convincing evidence that we need to find for. So that's my two cents on it. Is there any further discussion? Yes.
Um--
And if you could move your microphone over to--
I think there's, it's something about the sale of the property and the business owner and licensing and the gap in time. I wonder if there was, I wonder if there was business activity, or if there was, like, renovations to the property, or cleanup, or something that was happening that, again, isn't documented in a way that becomes the clear evidence that we need, in a way that feels like, from the perspective of the applicant, or from the folks here, that they were operating a business, they were doing what they needed to do to operate a business, but they weren't actually, like, receiving clients and fixing cars and doing the thing that their business does. They were doing other business things around it. And so it feels like it's, it is tough, because I do think that there was an effort to continue operating. It just doesn't appear, it's not obvious, and it doesn't appear as though that was, that was how it, that is how it felt to the community that was around the property, or to other parties that sort of would have that kind of documentation. So I wonder if something like that was going on, where it feels like, I do, I bought this auto shop, I own this auto shop, I'm working on my auto business, but it's not obvious, there's no evidence of that, because you're not, again, fixing cars, you're not doing minor or major car stuff. So that's, that is, that's tough. That is tough. I also wanted to note that the comments that came in and the testimony that we heard, it's, it's not a variance, and we're not here to discuss sort of the use or the abuse of the use. And it's, it's also unfortunate that whatever was happening prior to where we are now was so disruptive and sort of unwanted, or, you know, it wasn't a great business. That seems unrelated, but also unfortunate, because it does make it so folks are like, well, maybe we don't want them to come back. And it's, it just doesn't, it's not pertinent to what we're discussing, but it is also unfortunate, when you think about, again, a small business owner and the things that they stand for, so.
Thanks for those comments. So we have a motion before us. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair Perry. No, I agree with Members Smirko-- Smirkova's remarks there. I think that it's really tough, particularly for the major, for me. I think we have evidence, if it was minor, that we were trying to get to, like, those parts, that there was some activity there regarding these things, but it takes more effort, and there would, should be some sort of trail of some sort for the major, had that happened in that year gap. I also think that, you know, when the property was being sold with the intention of becoming what it used to be, I think that would potentially restart the clock, but I think that the year might have passed without convincing evidence for the major. So I think I'm going to have to agree and vote with the motion.
Thanks for those comments. Anyone else? With that, would the clerk, please call the roll?
Waiting for the mics to turn on. Okay. Where'd it go? Board Member I Colts.
Aye.
Grant Scorsesh.
Nay.
Ingram.
Aye.
Johannessen.
Aye.
Smikarova.
Aye.
Aye.
I have five ayes and one nay.
So your request for the certificate is denied. You can see staff about what your options are going forward. I do want to reemphasize, though, regardless of what happens, I think the city values your businesses that you've done and the work that you've done in the community, and this is not a reflection on any of those things. Thanks for coming down. Okay. Is there any old business or new business? I see none. And our next meeting is May 16th. I will be at a technical seminar during the 16th, so I will not be present. Councilmember, or councilmember? Councilmember. Counsel-- Vice Chair Wang will be chairing the meeting in my stead, and she did a great job last time, so she's going to do another great job. And I will give you a sneak preview that there is a, there are four appeals of the zoning administrator at the next meeting.
And Chair Perry, I would like to mention one thing. I was, because you will be out, I would like to introduce one more city planner--
Oh.
--who a couple of you may recognize. Fatima Olakoga has an application coming forward to the May 16th, and unfortunately, I wanted to surprise you here. So she is our, for those of you who don't know, she is our former committee clerk for the Board of Adjustment, and she is now a city planner.
Congratulations. That's great. I'm glad we'll be seeing you again. Absolutely excellent. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Four, something.